Hello and welcome to a panel discussion about Salem School Committees in Massachusetts. This panel is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Salem, and we're partnering with Salem Access TV to bring you this panel as an on-demand recording. School Committees in Massachusetts are responsible for overseeing the public schools in the district. Some key facts about Salem School Committee include that the Salem School Committee conducts meetings twice a month in public. In Salem, six people plus the mayor are members of the school committee. And every two years, when there are local elections for the city council, Salem also elects three school committee members for a four-year term. The rules might be different if you're in a different community, but they're generally very similar to these. This panel discussion will focus on questions that members of the community may have about school committees. For example, what exactly do school committees do? And how do they influence what happens day-to-day in the schools? Or, as a voter, how should I assess candidates for school committee? What kinds of experiences and skills would be useful for a school committee to have? Should I learn about and vote for the school committee candidates if I don't have children in the schools? And as a community member without children in the schools, how can I stay up to date on what's happening in the schools? People may also wonder, how do community members influence what school committees do? Or, should I run for school committee? So we'll address those questions today with a terrific panel of people who can offer different perspectives on the school committee. Dorothy Presser is Field Director with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, and has served there for nine years. She works with school committees around the state, assisting with policy work, superintendent searches, and most importantly, as a trainer to help committees develop effective practices. She was part of the curriculum design team from MASC's District Governance Program, an award-winning professional development program that centers on best practices for highly effective school boards. She's a contributing author to a book called Improving School Board Effectiveness. She formerly served on the Lynnfield School Committee for 21 years, and was Chair for 12 of those years. And prior to joining MASC as a staff member, she was on the board and served as President of the association. Next, Dr. Stevens Reich is in his third year as Superintendent of the Salem Public Schools. During his tenure as a district leader, the Salem Public Schools has focused on expanding access to early childhood programming, enhancing career technical pathways, growing early college opportunities, and strengthening mental health supports for Salem's youth. In doing this important work, the Salem Public Schools are driven by a fierce commitment to dismantling inequities so that all students are provided with a first-class educational experience. Dr. Reich previously served as State Appointed Superintendent of the Holyoke Public Schools and a Superintendent of the Wakefield Public Schools, so he has experience working with several different school committees. His experience as an education go beyond serving as Superintendent. He led the Pilsen Little Village Network Elementary Schools in the Chicago Public Schools, and served as a principal and leadership coach in the Boston Public Schools and as a teacher in Andover. Our panel also includes two Salem School Committee members. Beth Ann Cornell is a former college professor and a current college consultant. She's been a Salem Public School parent for 15 years, and currently has a seventh grader at Collins Middle School. She was elected to the school committee in November 2021, and serves as Chair of the Policy Subcommittee and as a member of the Equity and Finance Subcommittee. Manny Cruz is a graduate of the Salem Public Schools and has served on the Salem School Committee since 2018, becoming Vice Chair of the School Committee in 2022. Mr. Cruz is currently also serving as Salem State Representative to the Massachusetts House of Representatives, and he works as a Senior Policy Director for the nonprofit Latinos for Education. On the Salem School Committee, Mr. Cruz serves on the Policy Subcommittee, the Personnel Subcommittee, and the Building and Grounds Subcommittee. So thank you all for joining us in this panel this evening, and I'm looking forward to the conversation. So let's start by talking about the responsibilities of the school committee with respect to overseeing public schools in the district. The aspects of schools that may be most visible to families day-to-day are curriculum and homework assignments, teachers, classrooms, outdoor spaces. How do school committees influence the school curriculum, teaching, and the quality of physical spaces like the classrooms, playgrounds, and sports fields? So I'll start with Dr. Reich. While many of these decisions are in your court as a school leader, what do you look to the school committee for when you're making decisions in areas like curriculum, teachers, and facilities?
I think in my experience working with school committees, they're elected officials who have a very strong voice or strong ideas about what their constituents want in schools. And they represent the people we serve, the children and families we serve. And I think it's important that as Superintendent of Schools, that we listen to the voices of our community. And so when, even though decisions may, some decisions are in the purview of the superintendent, some are, you know, the governance decisions are in the purview of the school committee, I think it would be foolish not to engage. And we have subcommittees where there's an opportunity for dialogue and exchange. And, you know, I'm fortunate in Salem to have a committee that does really try to elevate the voices of the communities that they represent. And I think that can only make sure that the decisions we make are informed and are responsive to what we hear from the families we serve, not just the families of children in the school district, but taxpayers in the community. And so that's how I think about the work with the school committee. And, you know, having been in a district that had a receivership, it was a receivership, it was a little lonely at times. And to have the opportunity, I mean, I think that's what democratic government and democratic, being in a public school district is all about, is to be able to elevate the voices of the people you serve. And I think school committees play a huge role in that, to that end.
Thanks, that's helpful. And Dorothy Presser, what input should school committee members provide in the areas of curriculum, teaching, and facilities?
So I want to bring it back a little bit to sort of the bigger picture of the responsibility of school committees, which would include budget and goals as two of them, also hiring, evaluating the superintendent, and policy. And a number of those factors would come into play in the influence that school committees would have over what happens in curriculum and teachers and so forth. They are the employer of record for the collective bargaining agreement, so making sure that they're the right elements for the teachers to be able to do their job within the collective bargaining agreements, supporting professional development that teachers may need through the budget, and, you know, in terms of facilities, supporting the needs of the buildings and playfields and so forth through the budget process. So along with sort of representing the vision and values of the community, understanding what the superintendent is telling the school committee about the needs of the district, the need to get the job done, and having those factors come together and being ready to support those needs are an important job of the school committee.
Well, thank you. And Manny and Beth Ann, how have you provided input into decisions about curriculum, teaching, and facilities? I think what Dorothy described just now is it's a step removed, there's a goal of, or there's a goal-setting and stepping back and looking at overall policy, but talk a little bit about your roles in those kinds of decisions.
Happy to do so, and I think it's an excellent question because it really is about the collaboration with the superintendent and their respective designees in each of those areas. Because as a school committee member, sometimes I'm confused for administrator, but that's not my role, and I recognize that. But instead, what I can do is I can offer thought partnership in particular areas. So as a member of the Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee as an example, when it comes to our facilities, we have a superintendent who has worked with our committee on the visioning of what does it mean for a physical building to be a school? And what is the programmatic elements that we're seeking to have? How do we steward those particular buildings so that we ensure that they're around for the long haul? And the work that we've been able to do as a committee is to ensure that, you talk about goals, that we are being really thoughtful and forward-thinking about what our school buildings look like, how they're designed, are they inclusive spaces? Do the playgrounds ensure that all kids can access them? And then you think about the larger questions around preventative maintenance, these are the things that you talk about as a committee. And when I joined the committee at the time, we did not have a preventative maintenance plan. And when I think about what that meant for our districts, we used to have them, but we were not current anymore. So we didn't have a sense of how to secure our assets, how to ensure that all of the buildings had a plan for the maintenance of them so that things could be extended past their useful life. But then we could also have that full landscape of what work needed to be done. And I think about the opportunities that come up as a school committee through the MSBA's process, to be able to submit the various applications for some of the major projects in the district. And there is some prioritization that has to happen, and a superintendent that is worth their weight in salt will always check with the school committee about how to make those priority applications, because it really is about the strategic direction of the district as much as it is about the need. So when you think about, you know, either the capital improvements that need to happen or some of the critical things like fixing boilers, fixing roofs, those are conversations that happen two-way between the committee and the superintendent. And then sometimes you get to do the real big visioning. That's what we're doing right now as we're discussing high school redesign. So that would be my example for facilities. And then for the teaching front, it would certainly come back down to the work that we do as part of our bargaining with our union and the conversations that we have in policy. But I think my colleague is well-positioned to talk about curriculum, and then also some of the ways that you've seen us influence the teaching in the district.
Well, I was thinking specifically about policy when you asked that question. As the Chair of Policies, that's, you know, I'm only a year and a half in to serving on the school committee, but what I find very rewarding is being able to review and develop policies that align with the vision and values and goals that are set by the superintendent yearly. And so for us, equity is sort of the lens through which we see everything. So being able to, you know, as our policy reviews come up, we're, you know, editing for gender-neutral language, we're making sure that our transportation policies are equitable, that our, you know, our parent participation policies are equitable. And so that's a real concrete way that I feel like we can work in partnership with the superintendent to support his goals and vision, and I find that part very rewarding. On the curriculum front, those are interesting conversations for me. As a former college professor, I think it's probably good that I'm not on the curriculum committee, because there are two other teachers on that committee, I think that's a lot of teachers. But it's, we have a nice relationship, we have nice relationships with one another as a committee also. So the Chair of that committee is Dr. Pangalo, and often, for example, health classes will come up. And so my background is in gender and sexuality studies. And so sometimes she'll call me and say, this is kind of what we're talking about, just to keep you in the loop. If you'd like to, you know, read our minutes, you might be interested. And those are great, those are great conversations to have.
And the one thing that I would add, as a committee, our charge is around student achievement, equity is an imperative to that. And so when we have our conversations with the superintendent about the data and what it's saying about our students and the experience that they're having, that is really when we start to hear from the superintendent, from the deputy superintendent, about the changes that we need to make in our curriculum to ensure that all students can access the content. And I think what you find from the committee is that we have a high standard of expectations for our students, but we also realize that that's what's necessary, is a scaffolding of some supports for our students to ensure that there's equity for multilingual learners, for students that are low-income or transient, our students that might be experiencing homelessness or are in foster care. You recognize when you examine the data for particular subgroups of students, that that's where you really need to have those difficult conversations about the programs that you're offering, and whether or not we're doing right by all kids.
Thanks.
How'd I do, Steve?
Excellent, well said Manny.
Well said. So springtime is budget season. Dorothy Presser mentioned budgets, and so I thought I would ask, how do school committees influence the school budget? So I'll start with Dr. Reich, who's very much deep into this now.
We're in it.
What input do you seek from the school committee on the budget? And how do school committee members affect how the overall budget might be distributed across schools and across areas such as teaching, buildings, and facilities and curriculum?
Yeah, so ultimately, the budget is the school committee's budget. You know, my role is to present them with a, they, part of what my responsibility is to present them with a budget that meets our goals and values and priorities that we set out as a district. And the school committee members talked about equity being the lens, and I think that's how we try to present a budget to the school committee. I would be, I want to be clear, though, that that's not, that's not done alone. That's done with a subcommittee, which Ms. Cornell is part of. And, you know, we meet quite a bit leading up to the recommendation. There's a lot of meetings, a lot of engagement, both with the community and then with our school and department leaders. And so the school committee, at least the way we've done it in Salem, is that the school committee members are part of those discussions. They ask questions to the different departments, and they are, you know, they, there's a fair, there's, I think, a lot of trust around what we propose, but there's also a lot of important questions that they ask and considerations that they have to ensure that we're staying true to what our core mission, vision, and values are as a school system. And so from the period of time, from the turn of the calendar, January, all the way through now, there's a lot of discourse of which the school committee is a part of in developing a budget. And that feels right to me, because ultimately, they're, on Monday night, or they, they'll ultimately vote. I'm not sure when this is going to air, but they're going to vote on the final budget, and they, they should have, be fully informed leading up to that so that they can make sure that their vote is a reflection of what they truly believe is necessary, and that it'll go to the city council from there with a strong endorsement, hopefully from the school committee.
Great. And Manny Cruz and Beth Ann Cornell, what input have you provided on the school budget? And how do you review it to ensure that it's funding the important district priorities?
One thing that I think we do have quite a bit of influence over is the transparency of the process. And to Steve's credit, he really encourages his, you know, directors and school leaders to come and talk to us about how they've each developed their budgets. So it is really a collaborative process among Steve and his staff. And, but what we can say is, and this is what we did this year, is, you know, we'd like to make sure that you're engaging your onsite school councils, which involves, includes teachers and parents, and some school leaders, and just make sure that everybody is sort of doing this the same way. Let's make sure that everybody's, you know, listing priorities, listing things that you can't live without, things that you can compromise on. So we felt really confident that every school had gone through that exact same conversation so that you have, you know, you have real community input from all the different stakeholders in each building. I think that's true of the different departments. The stakeholders who are engaged in the real work, they know how to best spend their money. And they know what they need, they know the resources that they need, and they know that the resources that they can compromise on if we're in a tight budget year. So that's, that's the part that I appreciate, is that we're really able to, you know, have, we're the ones who can have, you know, make sure there's some accountability and transparency. And Steve's a great partner in that regard. It's not like we're, you know, dragging him to the table. And we do meet quite a lot.
Yeah.
And from my perspective, Beth Ann, I think you really articulated one of the most important pieces, which is around the process. This is now, I believe, my sixth budget almost. And each time, I think I've seen the process improve, but there have been some challenges that will emerge with respect to the committee, the information that we receive, when we receive it. I've had several different superintendents, and each of them had a different process. But I think the things that I look for is, what's the process? What is the construct of the budget? How are you presenting it? Is the levels of transparency clear to your average person who's reading the budget, so to appear before a hearing? Is there inclusion? When we go out and we start talking to folks about the budget, do we stop at just the advisory councils to the particular school sites? Or do we locate opportunities for budget forums in communities that historically haven't always engaged, because we don't meet them where they are? And so when I see that as part of a process, what it tells me is that this budget is aligned with our values, which is what I saw in this particular budget, where we had a budget forum, and it was in the Salt and Stone School. So that I know that the parents that have an incredible amount of access are also being situated closest to the parents that have proximity to my old neighborhood and the Point neighborhood as well. So, you know, those are the things that, you know, I also look for. And then, of course, it's about the dollars and the cents, and where we're making our investments. I can say that as a school committee member who has previously voted against a budget, and that was my first budget, the reason that I did so was because I didn't believe that the budget that we were being presented, I did think at the time that the city could have afforded to invest more in the district. And since then, you know, I do think that that was a closer budget vote, but the process has changed as a result. So you think about that opportunity, the budget is not a rubber stamp. It needs to be a process where the committee is engaged, and engaged in a way that is meaningful. And I want to talk about the role of the Chair. In Salem, it's unique, because it's, the mayor is both a school committee member and the chief executive on the city side. The Chair of the committee is a servant to the committee. That is what, you operate under Robert's Rules of Orders, that is your role, is to serve the committee. And it should be a two-way partnership between the district and the city. So the expectation that I have as an individual committee member is that as a colleague, that we'll have proactive conversations about what is the full fiscal picture on the city side of things. And since we go first, we want to make sure that we're able to get as much as the city's able to allocate to the budget. And so I do think that as a community, we've come a long way, we're well above net spending, we do our part, and I do think that our values are aligned. It's, the debate now comes down to whether or not we're able to get a little bit more. So I do think it is incumbent upon school committee members, especially any of the new ones, to know that you can always advocate, work with the superintendent, talk to the Chair, and that the numbers and the format that you see before you, it doesn't have to stand. Your responsibility is to do your check-in with the superintendent, to talk to the Chair, and to make sure that you're outlining your priorities through the year so that when you get to the policy debate about the budget, it should reflect the way that you intend it to be.
Right. So there are ways to maybe get a little more funding for the schools, if you're using your communication tools and working with your Chair.
Absolutely.
I think Manny made a really important statement there. He said the policy debate about the budget, because we often talk to school committees about the fact that probably the biggest policy document they deal with during the course of any given year is the budget, because there's so many policy, there's so much policy implemented, or, you know, that is embedded in that budget document. And the talk that has been going on about aligning the budget to the goals, or aligning to the values, right, and to the goals, because the budget, it's the biggest resource you have to be able to implement your goals and move your district in the direction that you want to move it. So having that conversation about, are we implementing our budget? Are we putting forward a budget that helps us, move us forward and implement our goals? Is a really important part of the discussion that I'm hearing going on, I'm hearing going on here.
Thank you. That's a really important point, I think. The budget is your policy and your goals, and working within that.
And it's about kids.
And it's about, and it's all about kids, right? Keeping kids at the center is a really important part of this work. So one of the key decisions that a school committee makes is to hire the superintendent. And over time, the school committee members need to maintain a constructive relationship with the superintendent to help the district move forward. So I'll start with Dorothy Presser for this question. What are key elements in making the school committee superintendent relationship a constructive one? And how should a school committee member approach their oversight role while also ensuring that their relationship with the superintendent is positive?
I think the key element, to borrow a realtor term, communication, communication, communication. That constant, you know, conversation about priorities, about goals, about how things are working, having that understanding. And when there are issues, talk them out, have conversations about it. I forgot the second part of your question. So in terms of, one of the other things that I think school committees need to remember is, any, the school committee is the only, the superintendent has one boss, right? It's the school committee as a whole. But that conversation has to happen with every school committee member and the superintendent, but it's the committee together that's working together to make decisions and move things forward. So it's not just the relationship with the superintendent, it's the relationship with fellow committee members, and keeping that flow of information and conversation going to making sure that people are heard, that you're hearing, and that you're able to also, as, you know, as Manny said, keep kids at the center of all those discussions to be able to move things forward.
And Manny and Beth Ann, how have you developed a positive and constructive relationship with the superintendent while providing honest and constructive feedback?
Well, you know, I'm going to make a joke about how often you call. Steve really likes the phone. He is, he, a lot. He really, really likes phone time. And so he is, he's really excellent about reaching out to all of us to communicate, not just if there's a problem, but if, I think what Steve has done is identified the different strengths that we, each of us as school committee members brings to a different issue. There are certain things that he's not going to call me about because I have no insight, you know. And, you know, Amanda Campbell, for example, is, you know, she is, I forget her exact title, I feel like it's the Director of Multilingual Programs in Lynn. So she's an invaluable resource, and so he knows that he can tap into that. I've been a parent in the district for a very long time, and so, you know, Steve knows that he can call me to talk about that. Manny's excellent with policy and also the sort of relationship that we have with the state. So each of us brings something to the table, and he, I think, has identified what those are, and he relentlessly picks up the phone and calls us about it. I will also say that I don't always, I respect Steve tremendously, and the thing that makes that easy is that he is, kids are always at the center of every decision that he makes and every conversation that we're having, always. Even sometimes when I forget, and I think, you know, we've got to think about parents and teachers, and, you know, Dr. Reich has always focused squarely on the kids in the district. And when I, you know, we all don't agree about everything, but the open lines of communication make our disagreements pretty manageable. I can, I can generally see where the superintendent is coming from. I don't think, since I've been on, we've had any sort of massive disagreements where the rest of the school committee is like, you know, he's gone off the rails. And, you know, and I do think that is, you know, the focus on kids and the focus on equity makes, I think we're all quite aligned in that way, so it really makes those conversations easier.
I think the most important thing that, and well said, Beth Ann, that we can do as committee members to have a constructive relationship with the superintendent is, you have to be there to provide support. And in most instances, it's a superintendent that you voted for, you signed a contract with, you did the negotiations, you came together, you said we're going to work together. And I can't tell you, we're in a unique situation in which we have a superintendent of color. Superintendents of color notoriously end up in districts who hire them and then don't stand beside them when they try to take on the tough fights in public education that exist, that are all related to equity. And what I see from the committee is, the superintendent's goals, I get asked this question when I was running for school committee, they said, what are your goals? The goals of the superintendent, they're my goals. I don't leave the superintendent alone to try to pursue each of the areas throughout the year. It is proactive conversation. Yes, Steve likes the phone, he calls me at least four times a week, and I do the same on his front, but it's all with the intention of, whatever the goals are that are in that evaluation, we're usually talking about a subject that is related to our strategic plan, where he needs guidance, support, additional resources. And my job as a school committee member, as an advocate for our children, is to say, I'm going to help you figure this out. I may not have the answer, but I'm happy to be your thought partner. And when it comes to the portion, what I call about being a critical friend, providing the accountability, that to me is the work that you do in public, the work that you do in private as well. But it's the questions that we ask and presentations that are being made, it's the comments, it's also an understanding that Steve understands how I operate. I expect that he will respect me as a professional, and he'll lay it out for us all. He'll tell us exactly what's happening in the district, and I think that that's a marked shift that we've seen in Salem. We get a weekly report about what's happening in writing, and so does everybody else in the district, which is, I think, a profound communication tool. So back to you, Dorothy, about communication, communication, communication. Not leaving your school committee members in the dark about issues allows me to fill the space to say, I can be candid with you, I can be transparent. When we disagree, again, I know where you're coming from, and we can focus on how do we move the district forward.
That's great. And do you have ideas for like ways that, ways that school committee members have maintained a committee members have maintained a good relationship with the superintendent and practices that you use to maintain the relationship?
Yeah, I guess I use the phone too much, but, um, no, I, I, um, you know, look, I, part of, you know, part of the, um, for me, and any superintendent really needs to look at when they go into a community, right? That, that it's important that there's alignment in the belief system. And, and, and that was important to me coming to Salem, right? That I, I mean, I have seven bosses. I know there's, as you said, they operate as one, but, you know, you want a committee that's, I don't want everybody to agree because I don't think that's good for policy. I don't think that's good for any district. You want there to be, um, some sparring and some back and forth around, um, around the right things. I mean, conversations around what's best for kids. And, you know, I don't expect everybody to agree, but I want to be, I want, it was important to be in a place where there was alignment around values. And I think that's, you know, important, um, for anybody who's thinking about being part of a school committee. Um, you know, I think there's some, you know, Salem is pretty clear and has been over time. Uh, there's alignment with the city council. There's alignment, has been alignment with the ma, the mayors, uh, the mayor for a long time here. And a school committee that, um, feels, you know, has a really strong commitment to equity, um, and a commitment to education. I mean, that, and I think Manny made an important point. I mean, Salem does invest a lot, uh, you know, over net school spending. And that's not true about every, many of the gateway cities in Massachusetts. And so that speaks volumes and that's important. I, I do think you need, and school committee members, I want school committee members who do understand the, the role, um, who understand what the lines are. I mean, sometimes I'm, and I've seen it in other places and I hear about it, the, the lines get a little blurred. I mean, their role is not to be the lead administrator in the district and not, and not to be in buildings and telling people what to do. That creates really, uh, challenging dynamics. And I think it's important that, uh, there be, um, conversations about what everybody's role is and respect for that. And I found that to be the case, but, um, um, but people need to understand that, you know, you're not coming to be on a school committee to do the job of the superintendent and other members of the team. But you play a really, really important role. And I, I, um, again, I like, I, I, it would otherwise be very, a very lonely, uh, uh, role. Um, but to have people who come, you know, I want school committee members who want to roll up their sleeves, who want to be part of conversations, be thought partners, not be afraid to ask difficult questions. I, I don't expect them to always agree with what I have to say as long as the agenda is around what we value. Um, and, and then I want them to be visible. I want school committee members to be cheerleaders for our kids. I mean, that's an important model. If they look up on the committee and they see a representation, hopefully of what the district, district is, we see a mix of parents, we see a mix of, um, folks that have, as Manny said, everybody comes or Beth Ann, sorry, everybody comes with their own set of expertise and background. That makes for a really healthy committee. It's good models for our children. It's good models for our, uh, parents. And in this really toxic world that we sometimes live in, that when there is a sense of like, you know, the, the, you know, we're all rowing in a similar direction for kids, uh, I think that, that, that's, that's, uh, really something to be proud of in a commu, community. And you can get some really powerful things done. Um, and so obviously I want, want people to join the committee who are ready, is, you know, ready to do that work, um, and who are on it for the reasons that they actually want to make the experience better for kids. We do see all, we do see here stories about people looking at it as a stepping stone or, you know, as a, you know, are politically driven. Um, uh, but ultimately we, we're in service of kids and families. I mean, that's, that's what we've, you know, I, that's what I've signed up to do. That's what I hope the school committee, um, members are, you know, signed up to do as well.
Yeah, thank you. That's very inspiring, I think. I don't want to say everybody. Um, so next we'll discuss how commit, community members can stay informed about the schools, what to think about when it's time to vote for school committee members, what it's like to serve on the school committee and how you can have a say in what your school committee members do. So a reason for having a school committee is to represent the community in decisions about the school and to pool a range of skills and experiences to provide useful input to district decisions, as you've all been mentioning. Um, so, Dr. Zright, I guess first, we'll start with you. What skills and experience have you appreciated among the school committee members you've worked with? What kinds of, what kinds of talents have they been bringing to the table?
You know, I, I love having educators on the committee, um, folks that have experience in education. Uh, that's, uh, been helpful. And in Salem, we do have, I think, at least three on the committee. Four, is it four? Four. Um, and, um, also having pa, a mix of parents, um, on the committee. Um, I think having folks who's, uh, you know, it helps sometimes to have, you know, attorney, an attorney on the committee. It helps to have people have financial background on the committee. Um, I mean, there, any, any, you know, to have in their personal and professional lives a ve, varied skillset and to have a committee that's integrated, I think, um, is, is, um, is, is really helpful. Have diverse representation, uh, that matches the community that we serve, I think is really important. I think it's important that, uh, all, um, community members feel like they, they can run for a school committee. And, um, you know, I, I will sit down with anybody that wants to talk to me. I, I obviously don't play a role in, uh, voting, uh, at all or, um, or influencing the vote, but I just, I lo, I would love to see, you know, I, I, I do want to encourage people to run, um, especially people who, um, you know, are committed to, uh, the vision and the direction that we have as a school system. So, um, yeah, that's, that, those are the things I would look for. And, um, again, I see the committee as an, as an asset. Um, and it needs to be an asset. And if it's not, it becomes very hard to be a superintendent in a place where the committee isn't, I, you know, able, isn't, um, providing an asset or, um, or adding to the value of the work because I do think they're instrument, they can be instrumental. And, you know, I've so far been very fortunate here in Salem.
Yeah. And that's great that you're willing to talk to candidates about the possibility of running and what the, what this work might be like. So that's really a very helpful thing. Um, and Dorothy Presser, what skills and experiences do you find that it's useful for school committee members to have? How should voters size up candidates for their skills and experiences?
I think, uh, Dr. Zright talked a lot about, you know, you can have a variety of experiences. Um, and I think a little bit of what, uh, you're sort of saying is, once a school committee member that's made up of all people with the same experience or the same background is not going to ask those critical questions, is not going to have that debate that you talked about, um, can be very unofficial. Um, I, I'm not sure there's any particular background that's important, except that you need to be willing to work as part of a group. You're part of a team now that needs to be able to work together effectively. So to be ready to be a team member, um, I think is really important and to understand that no matter what your reason for running, there are a lot of things that you're going to need to learn about, talk about, get involved in. Um, you know, one of our, one of my colleagues who talks a lot about the budgeting says, "I'll bet a lot of you did not run for school committee to get involved with the school budget, but guess what? Here you are, making decisions about budgeting." Um, so, um, no particular background, um, but that ability to, um, be ready to work as part of a team, I think is a skillset that's important. Um, go ahead.
Well, Christina, can I just add one more thing? Um, you triggered me to think too. It's so important also that school committee members, one quality is not to be overly reactive to what you hear. Because I, I don't want to speak, but I, I do know when you're a school committee member, people want to get your ear all the time about things that are happening, right? So, um, and it, it does require some, you know, good, you have to be a good listener, I think, and be patient and then be able to then ch, take that information and share it with the school district, um, or help channel the person in the right direction. Um, and I, you know, thankfully I have a, a group of school committee members that, you know, the story is generally somewhere in the middle, you know, generally, right? Um, and so that's just an important skill because people do want to grab your ear. And, um, it's, you know, especially if it's a committee member who's visible and active, um, and just, you know, that, that, that's an important skillset that I, I, that I think is important, that not to just assume that everything you hear, you know, in the supermarket is, is, uh, you know, the, really what's happening because there's always, uh, you know, different aspects to the story. And so that's, you know, there, it does require, uh, you know, it's a, it's a challenging role. And I, I, I don't know that, maybe one day I'll, I'll run for school committee once I retire, but it's not, it's not an easy role because people do want to, um, engage you. Um, and schools are something people are really passionate about. And they should be because it's such an important part of their children's lives. So.
Absolutely. Um, and I wanted to ask Manny and Beth Ann, uh, what skills and experiences have you appreciated your school committee colleagues having? And what superpowers have you brought to the table?
Well, Manny's superpower is, um, knowing how every, everything works, sort of like what the next step will be, what the policy is, what the, um, what the Robert's rules are. You know, it's a funny thing when you're just sort of a regular person and you say, "Okay, I'm going to run for school committee." And you walk in the door and I remember, uh, the first day because we were remote then. We weren't in person. And so everything is done by roll call vote. So you have to take attendance. And I realized right out of the gate, I did not know what to say. And I think the mayor went to me first and I didn't know if I was supposed to say "here" or "present." It was a very small thing, but I was very aware of the fact that I was on television and now, and, you know, it's so small, but you do have to acclimate yourself to the, the, um, the rules of order when you're, when you're part of the process. And so that's one of Manny's superpowers and one of many, honestly. Uh, he's, he's very good at, um, connecting people. Um, Mary Manning is just, she is a walking history lesson about Salem Public Schools. And that I value tremendously because, and, and I think this is true for probably most people who run for, for school committee in particular. You know, if you're a parent like I am, we all went to school. We all have ideas about education. If you live in a community for a long time, you, um, you acquire a lot of knowledge, but the behind the scenes, inside doing the work every day, you learn so much. And you really have to be willing to accept that you do not know everything. And you have to be willing to put in the work of listening, listening to your colleagues who have been there longer than you have, listening to the superintendent, learning your history. Um, you know, Jim Fleming was really valuable for that, you know, just being, uh, having so much institutional knowledge that we could all tap into. Uh, it's just, you know, that is very impressive to me. All of those things about my colleagues, just, you know, being able to learn from, from the knowledge they've acquired already because I'm, I'm the newest member. Or not anymore.
Not anymore?
No, Veronica is.
And, and I'll add to that, that I think, um, I love that Beth Ann is focused on her colleagues. Um, I think my colleagues and Beth Ann being one of them, they're just some of the most intelligent people that I've interacted with in my career in public service. The way that they approach issues incredibly thoughtful, meticulous, they're well-prepared. Um, and they couple that intelligence with a deep level of empathy for the people that we're here to serve, which is our students, then it's our families, then our educators. Um, and I think that that empathy is critically important because I, I think that our committee is composed in a way in which whenever we talk about particular stakeholders, we are thinking about all the things that those stakeholders bring to the table. We don't just think about parents as parents, uh, of children. We, we view them for the professions that they hold, for the language assets that they have, uh, for their diversity of experience as well as their racial and ethnic diversity. And I think that because we see the humanity in the folks that are engaging in our district, we, we are able to design better, better solutions. Uh, where school committees will get into trouble is, um, there are some school committee members who will believe that because we've been given this charge that somehow that means that we get disconnected from community, that, you know, we're just able to gavel people in, gavel them out and not, we don't have to listen to the voices that are coming to us and telling us about the urgency of issues. So I appreciate the opportunity to always redirect back to chain of command, but I do think that in this particular committee, I, I would say the, the intelligence of the committee members that are on there, um, from an emotional standpoint is critically important as well. Like that cannot be lost. It's not just about the policy. It is not just about the budgeting. I think we have a lot of folks that have those strong governance skills, but if you lack the emotional intelligence and empathy, what you will find is that, um, community members, they sense that right away. Um, so as you're thinking about candidates in this upcoming election and who might be coming to your door, really listen to that why that they offer you about why they're running. Um, listen to the way that they talk about the current committee, their colleagues, the superintendent, the students. See if they're, if they're talking about the assets and the positivity, the growth mindset, while also finding a way to balance their opportunity to be critical friends to the district, uh, and how they want to approach working with their colleagues. Uh, I can't tell you how important it is for me to have positive relationships with all my colleagues. We absolutely disagree. It happens all the time, but I've never run into a situation with my colleagues on the committee in which, when it comes to working on the next issue, which is about our kids, that we don't just move on and we respect the decisions. Even when I've been on the other end of a four-three, I always honored the decisions that the committee have made and I roll up my sleeves to do the work right alongside my super and my colleagues.
Thanks. And that's a, that's a really good point. Thanks for that. Um, next we want to talk about what, how much work is involved in being a member of the school committee. Um, the school committee meets twice per month for most of the school year. And then what else do school committee members need to do to be fully engaged and effective in this role? So let's start with Dorothy Presser. For a school committee to be highly effective, what should school committee members be doing?
I, I, when I was on the school committee and we were looking for people to run, I used to say, "We just meet twice a month," knowing full well that, that was not the full story. Um, because there, you know, you've heard, you've heard discussion about there are subcommittees that you're on. And the meeting, um, that is twice a month, there's preparation to do for that meeting. You get a packet before the meeting, which has, you know, the agenda of what's going to be discussed and you need to inform yourself and be ready to have those discussions. Um, and then the various subcommittees are doing, uh, work that ultimately will go to the full committee, but, you know, policy work, budget work, facilities work that, that has been talked about here, take time. Um, and, you know, that, that's meeting with, um, maybe not the superintendent, but some other administrators, um, to get that work done. Um, and then, you know, there's, as, as we've heard the discussion, sometimes you can't go to the grocery store without, without having it turned into, um, more of a grocery store trip than you thought it was going to be because you're, you know, you're helping a constituent, um, get an issue resolved or listening to their opinion. Um, so it's, I don't know if you can quantify. I think there's, there's certain times of the year, maybe summer's a little bit of a break from the rest of the year, but, um, it takes time. And I, you know, it's really, for all intents and purposes, a volunteer job. So.
Yeah. So can you talk a little bit about what, what you're doing in between meetings and besides the meetings?
I, I really love policy meetings. You know, I'm such a nerd about, I love it. Uh, it's, it's my favorite thing to be in charge of policies. I love rules. So, uh, that experience for me is delightful. Uh, the, I find it's, it kind of has, uh, it goes in waves. You'll have, right now, we're quite busy. It, it's budget time. Um, you know, folks are planning what's going to happen in the fall. So there are lots of interesting conversations around, uh, curriculum changes and new school leadership and that sort of thing. So it's, it's a little, it's a little busier right now, uh, but, you know, there are days where you go a week and you're like, "He hasn't called and we don't have a meeting." And you just don't pick your hat up. Uh, and, but, uh, it's, you know, some of the other stuff, and this is, you know, I have a, have a flexible job and I work from home. So I'm able to, you know, go to stuff like unified sports and banquets and, um, you know, we, uh, we all go to graduations, um, trying to think of other events. Uh, anytime there's a showcase that, that happens, as, as many of us as we can try to, try to make things. So some of us can only do things in the evening, but some of us have a little more flexibility during the daytime. But honestly, it's, that's probably the best part of the job is getting to walk into schools and, you know, reading to third graders and have them ask you the most amazing questions in the world. Uh, and, um, check, they were checking my credentials last time. They wanted to know what my degrees were. Uh, and that, that was great. So it is, you know, it can sometimes feel like a lot. Um, sometimes it feels like a community volunteer job that seems just fine. Um, but it is, I always tell people who, who ask, you know, are thinking about running, uh, and I've done, I've been involved in a lot of different organizations in my life. I, I've served in a lot of capacities. I got three kids and I would say, "This is the most rewarding thing that I have ever done in my adult life."
It's great to hear. And Manny, how about you?
I'll work backwards and I'm going to echo the sentiments that Beth Ann expressed, that it's not about the time, it's about the service. Um, the preparation, the journey, the knocking on doors to get elected, uh, that takes a lot of time. But once you're elected, um, it is about fundamentally serving the children and the families and the educators of our district and being a good steward, uh, of the, the organization itself, which is the Salem Public Schools. And yes, it's the two meetings that you see on the calendar. It's the subcommittees, but then it's, uh, Beth Ann, you were just describing it so eloquently. It's like the bonus things you get to do.
Yeah.
You get to go and really engage with families and students. Um, I just spent a full day with the superintendent and it was a ten to, to three o'clock type of day where we were, uh, visiting one of our newest programs in the district and having really rich conversations that involved student voice. really rich conversations that involved student voice, parent voice, educator voice, and external stakeholders to learn about what we're doing, and to further the conversation about how we scale up the resources for a particular program. And then we had this amazing and transformative conversation in the afternoon about educator diversity within our district, how, how much of a priority it is, and we heard directly from educators of color about the experience that they've had, why they chose to go into education, what, what are the challenges that they're experiencing, and what they think they need in order to be retained and grown in the district. And so, when I think about, you know, those particular elements, that is what committee members are willing to put into the work. So, if you do have an area of expertise, or there's an element that you're really focused on, I'd say, you know, be, be wary of pet projects, you can get down a rabbit hole pretty fast, but nonetheless, always try to find those opportunities to, to learn about the work that you're voting on, and take the time to go see those things, because, you know, you'll be a better committee member for it.
Great, thank you. That's terrific. And the last question I want to talk about is, and it's for everybody, how can members of the public, those with children in the schools and those without children in the schools, have a say in what the school committee does and keep informed about the issues? So, maybe, do you want to start?
Yeah, sure. I mean, we try to give a lot of opportunities for families to weigh in. I mean, there's, I think there's both the formal processes, like there's public comment at school committee meetings, that people can engage, but there, you know, there are other opportunities. I, I, I'm pretty accessible in terms of talking with community members who want to reach out, whether that's by email, or, or have a meeting, or over the phone, and then we're starting, we've set up some opportunities for us to go out now, myself and a couple of the school leaders, the secondary school leaders, to meet with groups of parents who have particular questions, especially about middle and high school, which seems to be where a lot of the questions come now, and so we, we're, we're willing to take the show on the road and have those conversations. I think, you know, the school, well, I'll let the school committee members talk more about how they can engage with them, but we try to get as much information as, out as possible, and then to be very responsive to the, to the, you know, the two-way stream of, of information, and so that people feel like their questions, concerns, and ideas are always responded to in a timely fashion. I, I hope we, we do a good job with that. I think that's something we've really worked hard at over the last couple of years, and, you know, I, I feel like that's a big part of, you know, my, my responsibility is to make sure that there are people, you know, people, often people will say, like, "Well, I don't expect to get a call back." Well, no, you should get a call back, and you should get an email back, and not from, from members of my team, and I just think that's an important thing for us around engagement in the school system, and then I'll let the school committee talk about engagement with them.
Yeah, so why don't you go ahead?
So I, I would certainly say, on the district's website, the city's website, you'll find all of our contact information. I would not be shy, as a resident, about reaching out to me. My cellphone is listed on the, on the district website, so is my email. I try to be as responsive as possible to folks when they reach out. I'm always happy to meet with people where they are, so if you want me to come to a place nearby you to talk about what's happening in the district, I've always fielded those types of calls and meetings. It's actually how I met Beth Ann, and I would certainly encourage folks to know that my colleagues are pretty accessible, and don't get discouraged if you don't hear back from folks right away. Sometimes things get lost in the, the junk folder.
Junk.
And what I would tell you is, that's why picking up the phone is just so important. Just, just give us a call, most of us will get back to you 24 to 48 hours. It's not a, a promise that we'll be able to resolve a particular issue you might engage with us on, but at a minimum, you'll have a committee member who's going to be willing to listen and hear what you have to say, and I'll do my part to try to redirect you to the chain of command, to the superintendent, so that you can get the answer that you're looking for, and it might not be the one that you want, but at a minimum, you know, that's the way that I like to engage with folks, and if you see me at a community event, just come up to me and let's have a chat.
Thanks. And Beth Ann?
I would just echo all of that. I, I really try to encourage people to give me a call, and as Steve said, I think, I think, this actually took me a little bit for, for new school committee members to know who to connect people with, so that was a great learning opportunity for me as a new school committee member, when people did call me, that I would have to shoot Manny a text, and Kristen Pangala always knows exactly who you should talk to, just so I could make sure I was, I was, you know, turning constituents toward the people who really could help them. And I think, as a parent in the district, when I was a young parent, and when I think back, I, I actually wasn't always sure where I was supposed to go with my concerns, and so, school committee members are really great points of contact for helping you get in front of the person who, you know, to whom you can ask those important questions, or make strong recommendations, when it's not that clear. But, but also getting involved in, in some of, you know, some of my pet projects does put, do put, they put me in, in touch with parents that I might not otherwise have met, like through the athletics committee, and doing, being part of the parent advisory group, and going to community events. It's a great way for, as Manny said, like, come up and introduce yourselves to us. I'm always embarrassed that I can't speak Spanish when I do, when I go out places, but, you know, I can, you know, I do my best, but I do, yeah, I, I think we just try to get out as much as we can, and, and I don't, I would just encourage people not to be shy.
Yeah, that sounds great. Would you add anything?
I, no, I think it's been articulated very well.
Yes.
I think what some, I, in the school committees that I work with, a lot of times, the challenge that they, that they express is, how can we be more, how can we get the word out more to the community? You know, looking at the website and trying to figure out different ways, different ways that they can communicate, particularly with community members who don't have children in the school, who still have a vested interest because their tax dollars are supporting the schools. That, you know, that, 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 I think that's a constant challenge for school committees to try and figure out, how do they have that access?
Yeah, well, thank you. Well, I'd like to thank our panel this evening. It's been a great conversation. We've learned a lot about school committees and the schools, and thank you very much for all of your ideas and insights.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.